The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending. Tonight, we just have one application. Ultimately, after tonight's hearing, I'll take all the testimony evidence I get tonight, along with what I've previously gotten from staff, and I will write a recommendation that goes to your county commissioners. So ultimately, within two weeks from tonight's hearing, I'll submit my recommendation, then staff will get it scheduled to go in front of your county commissioners, who ultimately have the final decision in this matter. So if you do wish to give testimony, I'm gonna have you sign up here. I'm gonna come back to the public testimony part. We do have a lot of people here, so I might use some of our different options for doing that, so that we can make sure that we get out of here in a timely manner. But, of course, give everybody an opportunity to make comments for this application. But just real quick, as a general process, what we do is we start off with staff making a presentation, giving an overview of the project, as well as all the decision criteria. We have different conditions that are proposed to be put on the project. And then after that, the applicant will have their opportunity to make a presentation. They can use a PowerPoint, they can come up here and testify, whatever they so desire. And the applicant has up to 30 minutes for their presentation. Not required to use all of it, of course. And then after that, we'll move to the public testimony portion. So, we do have one procedure I want you to all think about, is that if there are groups of you that you think you can have a representative speak on your behalf. Typically, what we do there is we get about 10 people, and they'll sort of elect a spokesperson. And then a spokesperson can have up to 15 minutes to make a presentation and representation of their group. Otherwise, I think for tonight, given the number of people here, I'm gonna limit public testimony to three minutes per individual. If it gets to the end of your three minutes, you hear a buzzer go off, you're still making a point, I'll let you go over the three minutes. But again, given the amount of people that are here tonight, I'm gonna have a three-minute timer going for each public testimony. So I'll go over this again when we get to it. We'll have you, each individual, will come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and then you can give your testimony. In the meantime, all staff and the applicant are going. You can think about if any groups of you want to have a representative come up. And if you do do that, that representative can have up to 15 minutes. So there's the kind of give and take there. Otherwise, that's the general procedure for tonight's hearing. Given exigencies that might come up, might bounce around a little. And we'll say also, after public testimony, there's an opportunity for the applicant, as well as me, to ask staff for follow-up questions, rebuttal testimony, when we call if they want to address concerns or questions that have come up from the public. There will be an opportunity for that, and we'll give the applicant the final word for tonight's application. So without further ado, this is the hearing. I will initiate the hearing for CUP 25-0004, Bayview Bible Church. And we have Mr. Finkel for the county. Take it away, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Hearing Examiner. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cooten County Community Development. This is, as you have stated, a request by Bayview Bible Church to establish a place of assembly and worship. The subject property is located in Bayview. It's, the site is specifically located... Can anyone? Okay. I'll repeat again. The applicant is requesting a place of worship, a place of assembly and place of worship. The subject property is located in Bayview, near the intersection of Perimeter Road and Cape Horn Road. I want to remind the public that Bayview is not an incorporated city. Therefore, all the parcels are located in Cooten County unincorporated area. There's been questions in the past that I just want to address to make sure that the subject request is under the purview of Cooten County Community Development. Here's the 3D Google overlay of the subject property in question. It is, the site consists of five platted lots of Baywatch Estates. The plat was processed by community development and recorded in 2008. The applicant, should their request be approved, will be required to consolidate five residential parcels into one parcel in order to pursue their place of assembly and worship, to construct their structure and any amenities that support it, such as parking lot area. And with the consolidation of the five lots, the interior setbacks that are typical for all the common lot lines between those lots will no longer be applicable in this case. It will be considered one consolidated parcel. The applicant was advised for, as a precautionary measure, to do so after the decision has been made on this matter, because if they were to record the lot consolidation agreement on this property and the conditional use permit failed, or was denied by the Board of County Commissioners, they would not be able to split it out into five residential parcels. They would have to go through a formal subdivision review again. So we wanted to help them out and avoid that unnecessary process if it were to take place, the denial was to take place. The subject property is located in the restricted residential zone, and the comp plan designation for the subject property is shoreline. I'll get into the specifics of this request and kind of highlight on some of the key points of this request. And then ultimately, the applicant has the discretion to elaborate on any of the key points that I will address, as well as any questions that you may have. So, the primary purpose of this request is to have Sunday worship and fellowship gathering place. The structure will be approximately 12,900 square feet, and it will be for approximately 300 people. Weekly activities will include classes, events, services, weddings, and possibly funerals. Facilities will include classrooms, offices, and pastor and staff use. There will also be a summer program, such as one week vacation Bible school for local children. The occupancy will vary throughout the week. And, most importantly, the utilities, such as sewer and water, will be provided by Bayview Water and Sewer District. Access to the subject property will be via Perimeter Road. This is the proposed conceptual site plan that the applicant submitted. It shows the location of the proposed primary structure. I believe it will be designed as a daylight basement due to the topographical features, the site slopes towards the lake. So, the northern part is at a higher elevation than the southern part that abuts the primary access road, Perimeter Road. They are proposing two different parking areas. The parking has been designed in compliance with the occupancy and the use and the size of the building. So, that has been reviewed, and it meets the minimum requirements per Cooten County Land Use and Development Code, specifically Article 4.7, as it relates to parking standards. This is the conceptual floor plan and rendering of the building. Now, I want to point out that there have been questions in the past raised whether or not this is going to be exactly the building of, or not. And this is conceptual. So the applicants do have some discretion in how they lay out the building and the design of it. Most importantly, it's a matter of presenting the case that gives staff, as well as the hearing body, the understanding of the intensity. So the key to any request, including this one, is the intensity of use. The applicants are proposing to have a maximum of 300 individuals on site at any given time. So, the design of a building, the building size, and other features may change slightly to accommodate their final design. But we're typically tasked with their assessment of intensity in terms of water and sewer facilities, along with access, fire protection, and so forth, and building code requirements. During the public agency comment, we did solicit comments from various agencies with jurisdiction. We did receive a will-serv letter from Bayview Water and Sewer District. Now, I'd like to point out that in review of said document, and this has been also discussed in staff's analysis, I'd like to read it into the record. One of the issues that was observed by staff is the fact that a number of conditions within the will-serv letter were more related to a plating process. Specifically, items four, five, six, seven, and even item 11 seem to imply that some of the requirements for dedication and assessment of those services should be done through a plating process. Well, a conditional use permit is not a plating process. It's merely a process that is reviewed for the assessment of a use that's more intense than a by-right use in the underlying zone. Staff has solicited follow-up comments from Bayview Water and Sewer District. In fact, I spoke with the Bayview Water and Sewer District Administrator and has unfortunately reached out to, I have reached out to the engineer who has consulted the district, but unfortunately, I have not been able to get a hold of them. We've been playing a little bit of phone tag. But we do believe that the condition that we prepared addresses those concerns. The items that are listed in this letter have been included in the report, with the exception of those that are, excuse me, directly related to the plating process. We don't believe that that's an issue. We find that the applicant can work closely with the district when they apply for a building permit. So if you find that this is something that needs to be addressed before it moves forward to the Board of County Commissioners, you're welcome to have a condition that staff and the applicant work with the district. But we believe that it's unnecessary at this time to have any further assessment, because the building permit process will allow the applicant that ability to address those items that were brought up in this will-serv letter.
So, real quick, while we're just on that topic, preface more straightforwardly. So, the information that was sent to the district was, "We want this project, around a 300-person gathering place." And then they sent the will-serv letter. So was that information, is the will-serv letter for this project? Or is it more generic, or?
It is for this project.
Okay.
But unfortunately, I am not sure why the consulting engineer submitted items that are related to plating in regards to dedication of easements and so forth. I'd like to point out that I did review the Baywatch Estates plat decision and the file from 2008. And that 2008 decision states in the staff report, as well as order of decision and recorded plat, that water and sewer will be provided by Bayview Water and Sewer District. So there are at least five ERs that have been granted for the subject property. I don't know how that equates to one, more or less, commercial use, but the district issued this will-serv letter. So there is, there are connections available for residential use. So, if the property is consolidated, we believe that those consolidated ERs can adequately address the need for this facility. And it says as much that they have the willingness and capacity to serve this project. Equivalent residential use, for everybody's knowledge. With regards to the remaining public agencies, Lake's Highway District requested that the applicants get an approach permit from the district. Now, they were very clear that they are going to issue access in location of where the common driveway easements and approaches were depicted on the recorded plat. So the applicant will need to work with their civil engineer and their architect to design the approaches in location of the underlying plat. That's a clear requirement from the Highway District.
And just to be extra clear, because again, to address one of the comments that's in the record, those are the shared easements from Perimeter Road, right? Not the other kind of shared driveways that kind of come around?
That is correct. So, going back to the site plan, I want to be very clear that these access points will need to align with the depicted access approaches on the face of the recorded plat of Baywatch Estates. So that's something that will need to be reconciled with the applicant's engineering and architectural consultants. Panhandle Health District really had no comment on this. They said it's out of their jurisdiction. Timberlake Fire, as well as Cooten County Building Division, both have stated that they will have further requirements at the time of building application, should their request be approved. During the public comment period, we received a few comments. Three of them were in support, and three of them were in opposition. Some of the concerns were raised with regards to additional traffic, noise, visual impact, and potential impacts on the existing septic system that's run by Bayview Water and Sewer District. In fact, I spoke with one individual that contacted me directly by phone and raised her concerns. Now, she lives north of the proposed site, within the recorded plat of Baywatch Estates. I'd like to point out also that the plat was recorded with a set of CCNRs. And I do discuss this in the staff analysis, that the original CCNRs prohibited any use that was more intense than residential use of the site. So it was only allowing single-family residential uses. Now, I spoke with Mr. Landweir that submitted this application. I said, "This is a problem. This is something that the county does not enforce, but we would not be able to recommend approval of the project that would contradict or be in violation of the recorded CCNRs." Mr. Landweir submitted an updated, recorded set of CCNRs dating back to 2012 that specifically states that lots five through nine of Baywatch Estates have been granted the ability to have this specific use, a place of assembly and worship. So, it's interesting that perhaps this individual may have purchased the property after the HOA made that decision, or they may have not been involved, or they were not asked by the board. But the board that signed off on the amended HOA CCNRs is representative of all the individuals who own land or have shared interest in that plat. So I want to be very clear in that regard. So, when it comes to staff recommendation, we find that the Bayview is, as I stated, unincorporated seasonal town that needs urban amenities despite place of worship that does not directly align with the goals and objectives of the shoreline designation. One of the observations that we have made is that the shoreline designation typically addresses, or attempts to address, those parcels that are within a 500-foot distance of a body of water. In this case, shoreline designation, for whatever reason, goes way beyond 500-foot distance. In fact, this property is approximately 1,200 feet at its closest point to Ponderay Lake. So, we're not sure how that shoreline designation came about and why it's in that current configuration. But nonetheless, the code says there should be uses and amenities that support recreational use of the area. This should kind of give some discretion. And we find that having a place of assembly and worship that does have some sort of events could be consistent with recreational use of the site if they're holding some sort of events that will be inside and outdoors. The subject property is located kitty corner from Fire Station and Community Center. And I think it's important to address that, because every conditional use permit needs to address compatibility and consistency with the surrounding development. So, the parcels that are more intense than residential in nature are directly to the southwest, being the fire station, as well as the community center that sits on commercial land. And there are a number of commercially zoned parcels with commercial uses in the downtown core of Bayview, southeast of the subject property. For the reasons that I have explained, as it relates to the comp plan and compatibility reasons, we find that this application meets the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and should be approved by the hearing examiner, as well as the board. I stand for any questions that you may have for me at this time.
Okay, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Finkel. I guess one more before I let you sit down, and we'll see if I have any follow-up ones for you at the end. Can you just expand real quick on the landscaping that's going to be required?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I may have a follow-up after that, but go ahead.
So, I want to be very clear that a landscaping plan and landscaping requirements are not strictly mandated by the Cooten County Land Use and Development Code. Specifically, it states in Article 4.6 that staff can use some discretion to apply any and all of the provisions of that section for a conditional use permit. We find that this type of use is significantly more intense than any residential uses in the area. We find that the applicant should, as a good neighbor, apply all of the landscaping standards in all areas that abut residential parcels, as well as the public right-of-way being Perimeter Road. We want to make sure that they have appropriate landscaping and screening from parcels to the north, as well as west and east. So, we recommend that you impose a condition that we have submitted as part of the staff report, to have them fully comply with Article 4.6, as it relates to landscaping, Article 4.7, as it relates to parking, and Article 4.8, as it relates to signage. There's also a provision in the staff report that addresses lighting as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that answer.
Anything else?
That's it for right now. Thank you. All right, just making sure. Applicant, or applicant representative Joel Carlson? Come on up, sir. And just go ahead and state your name and address for the record. And then you have up to 30 minutes.
Thank you. My name is Joel Carlson. My address is 16136 East First Street in Bayview, 83803. I will not use 30 minutes. In fact, just this page I typed up will take much less than that. But since so much of the church is here, maybe we can use that extra time to take an offering. I don't know. Just a little church humor for you there. Okay. Let me read this, and thank you for your attention. "My name is Joel Carlson, as I said, and I'm the senior pastor of Bayview Bible Church. And I appreciate your attention to our request to build a space of our own. Several weeks ago, I had the chance to sit down over coffee with Jim Hubiak. Jim came to Bayview in 1982 with the goal of seeing a sustainable Christian church started. As Jim settled into town, he was told not to get too comfortable, as churches tend to fizzle out after about six months in Bayview, historically speaking. Not surprisingly, another church was attempting to get a footing in Bayview at the same time as was Jim, and that church did indeed leave town within six months. But Jim stayed. Jim stayed for 15 years. And what started as a small Bible study with four people grew and matured into a stable church congregation. Bayview Bible Chapel, now Bayview Bible Church, has been operating as a redemptive presence in the town of Bayview ever since. So I want to make a statement that I believe is patently obvious to even the casual observer, and that's this. Christian churches are objectively good for a community. They bring stability to a place. Speaking broadly, they represent a group of people that are seeking to promote truth and live morally in their town or community." I just today actually came across this section of the preamble to the Idaho State Constitution, which says, "We, the people of the state of Idaho, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, to secure its blessings and promote our common welfare, do establish this constitution." Now, I know that not necessarily everyone present or in the county certainly may agree with the truthfulness of the Bible, and that is their decision. But what I do want to stress right now is that the reason these United States and North Idaho are as free as they are is that this land was settled by people who, by and large, believed the truthfulness of Scripture, and who sought the best interest of the people and places where they lived. We at Bayview Bible Church, we care about our community. We care about safety. We care about justice. We care about protecting our children. We care about stable families and households. We care about preserving the values that make Idaho great. We care about the current generation and future generations for the people of Bayview, Athol, Carywood, and all the little hidden corners in northern Cooten and southern Bonner Counties, for that matter. Two years ago, we were approached by a representative of the sheriff's office and asked to please find a way for Bayview Bible Church to have a bigger presence at Bayview Days, our annual Fourth of July celebration, which is this Saturday. Now, why would they ask this of us? The reason that we were given is that the sheriff's office has observed that the greater the presence churches have at community events, the lower the likelihood of dangerous people invading and dangerous acts taking place. So just to be clear, we are not asking to start a church in Bayview. The church body is already in Bayview, and has been for decades. The majority of our congregation can walk to church or arrive after a short drive. Our people serve on community boards and participate in annual functions. Again, we aren't starting a church. We simply need a place to call our own, as a church. For years, we've met at the Bayview Community Center. I'll mention that in just a moment. We're very grateful for that. But in these past two years, our weekly attendance has essentially doubled. And much of that growth comes from people who already live in the community, who are wanting to be part of this church body in particular. Others have moved into North Idaho from various places around the country, and they are seeking a better life for their families, and they're striving to find a community of people who share their values and convictions. And we have been very happy to receive them. But with that comes tremendous growth. We're grateful to the center for hosting us all of these years. However, as the church continues to grow, our need for a space of our own becomes increasingly evident. Logistical and spatial limitations have made this need now more than ever nothing short of dire, in our estimation. Just for example, we even had to transform the basement into an overflow room, hang up a TV screen, and pipe the sermon downstairs, because not everybody can fit upstairs and remain safe. Our goal is to build, as quickly as possible, a house of worship on the land we already own, and a place already designated for a church building. We ask for the support of the county as we go about this project for the good of people and for the glory of God." Thanks very much. That's all I had prepared. And I don't know if you have questions for me at this point. There's people a lot smarter than me when it comes to a lot of the specifics, but I don't know what I could answer.
No, it's okay. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have no questions for you at this time. All right. So I'm not sure if anyone really had a meaningful opportunity to see if they were going to get together in a group, to have a group representative. Any show of hands if that took place? All right, that's okay. That's okay. It's just an option. So, then generally speaking, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go through, I'm going to go through all the in-favors first, and then any potential opposed after. And I'm just going to go through the order that I have them stacked up, which I believe is the order that they were signed up for. So again, come on up, state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have up to three minutes. So up first, Steve Taylor.
Thank you for letting me talk. Am I speaking loud enough? Because we're known not to speak very loudly. Can you not hear me? How's this?
There you go.
All right. Steve Taylor, 9537 East Parks Road in Athol, Idaho, 83801. I am the lead audiovisual person in the church. So this part about one complaint I heard through a third party is sitting on their porch Sunday morning, having coffee, and hearing church music. They did not want this. So I piqued my interest. So I did studies, looked on the internet... Looked on the Internet, and I could not find any study comparing noise outside of a church. One very old one, where they had windows, got to decibel sixty, which is conversation. Now, I found out why is the modern construction techniques and materials block noise. They cannot be heard. So, they don't even, it's not a study worth investigating. What they were worried about was bells outside a church, which is obvious. They'd make a lot of noise. And now, with mosques, they have speakers, they called us. Worship six times a day, I hear. I would like to see how you guys, if you approve that. The, oh, I forgot my glasses. Listen, I talked to one of our security people that are outside now in our, during service, and they could not hear our singing. So, all we have is a piano and a acoustic guitar. No electrical things, no drums, none of this. So, we won't get that, because we don't have any of that type of person in our congregation as of yet. So, the noise factor won't, it's not there with that, the singing there. We sing four songs every service, and I did a timing of three to four minutes per song, so we give basically fifteen minutes of singing to God once a week. One hour a month. It's kind of insignificant to me to give the glory of God. That's about all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Ken Frye.
I'm Ken Frye. Address 17974 East Dewomish Drive, Bayview, Idaho, 83803. I believe I can be brief, not to be redundant to Joel Carlson. Bayview seeks, Bayview Bible Church seeks to live the values and the beliefs shaped by both our nation and our church, and we're convinced that having a church in Bayview established and having its own place, its own presence, will in fact benefit the surrounding community. As mentioned before, this church has been in Bayview since 1982, and it has been growing steadily. There seem to be some concerns about noise and traffic. What we're proposing to do is to leave the community center and build a building across the street and just adjacent, and so we will have the same people in the same cars, driving the same road, at the same time coming to see the same pastor as is now when there is a new building or if we're in the community center. So, that will not change. There has also been some concern with the water and sewer issue. Our proposal is not to use five residential hookups for sewer and water, but to have one, and that will be used infrequently, rather than twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, as five individual residences would have. There's also been addressed in, oh, talk around the community and such, of parking. Right now, the community center that we are in has paved parking for thirty-five spaces. The new configuration has one hundred and one parking places. We use a little bit of the gravel for where the fire department is, but we do not have overflow to perimeter road or over to the water and sewer district or anything like that. So, one hundred and one spaces is nearly three times of paved parking than what we have now. So, with that, we really appreciate your review, your consent, and your granting of this conditional use permit for the building of Bayview Bible Church to continue, not just start, but continue the mission that was started decades ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Terry Autry?
Otten.
Otten. Oh, that's an N. My apologies.
I'm Terry Otten, 24400 North Good Hope Road, Athol. And probably just real quickly, most of what I would have already been covered, but the CCNRs, you know, the intent was there, so, you know, anybody that bought in the neighborhood, those CCNRs since 2012 were accommodate the church and describe, I think eight points in there, eight of the sections in there speak to that about the church and conditions to be met. And another one would be, it is twenty-five mile an hour. This was done in the presentation, but to reaffirm, it's twenty-five mile an hour on perimeter road there, so, you know, traffic, slow there, is it, you know, these are reasons we feel it's a good fit. And, and we, lighting, shielded lighting is something we want to, we want to be a good neighbor. So, you know, whatever, we take seriously the comments and concerns, and we want to fit the community, and, and the facility will be possibly available if needed for an emergency, or we don't know. It's mainly for the church and the purposes set forth, but, you know, that would be available of the largest building there for an emergency situation, or maybe other thing. We don't, we don't really know at this point. Yeah, I guess that's about it. We want to be a good neighbors. What I want to say is, you know, so we're listening in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dakota Daris?
Davis.
Davis? Oh, okay. Only batting five hundred so far. Davis makes more sense.
Yeah. My name is Dakota Davis, 1134546, North Lybeau Avenue in Bayview, Idaho. Hello, my name is Dakota Davis. I am a husband, father, churchman, landowner, a stone throws away from the church property in question. To my friends, my neighbors, and the member of, members of whatever I'm supposed to call you guys, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in favor of our church and our desire to build a beautiful place of worship and beautiful Bayview. This isn't merely about a building. It's about continuing a tradition that is deeply woven into the fabric of our nation. From the beginning, America has been a land where historic Protestant Christian faith is not just protected, but welcomed, and dare I say, given preference. Our founders believed that religious liberty was essential to free a free society. That is why the First Amendment to the Constitution grants that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. What we're asking for today is not special treatment. We're asking for the freedom to do what Americans have done since the founding of this nation, to gather together, to worship God, to raise families rooted in true, robust faith, and to be a blessing to our community. To this point, I would like to make the frank observation that it is a stain on Bayview's good name that for, in over the past one hundred years, as a community, we have not made as higher priority the proclamation of the lordship of Jesus Christ in a more tangible way by the ordinary means that is a church building. Now, for a short reminder, in the landmark Supreme Court case of the church versus the Holy Trinity in the United States in 1892, the court declared, after reviewing historical documents and the legal precedent, that, quote, "This is a Christian nation." They weren't saying everyone had to be a Christian. They were acknowledging the truth that Christianity has profoundly shaped our laws, our values, and our understanding of right and wrong. This recognition doesn't violate the separation of church and state. It upholds it, because a just government doesn't silence faith. It protects it. And let's be clear, the law still is on our side, is on the side of the church. The Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, signed into law in 2000, protects churches and other religious institutions from discriminating and zoning and land use regulations under federal law. Local governments cannot impose burdens on church, on churches' ability to gather or build unless there is compelling reason, and even then, only in the least restrictive way possible. We are not outsiders asking permission to enter. We are faithful citizens seeking to contribute. We want to build a place that lifts up the name of Christ Jesus, cares for the hurting, helps the poor, and points people, I'm almost on very end, and points people to the eternal hope and arisen Savior. Bayview is a beautiful town, and like this country, it is stronger when Christian faith has room to breathe, serve, and shine. Let us build not just a church building, but a beacon of hope for our community. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, Linda Landware. I got that one? All right.
Yes, yeah, I give mine up. Everything I have to say is on the mix set.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And Doug Landware.
Doug Landware, I've been at 34300 North Cool Winds Court since 1975, and I love my home and I love my community, and I love my church brothers and sisters. I kind of was the gopher to get all the paperwork put together, and it kind of started, oh, a year and a half ago, I went in and kind of started talking with Helga, and she helped me some bit, and then it kind of, kind of, you know, just took a little while to get going, and I went in and talked with Sierra, and then we finally applied, and Vlad kind of took over and was my helper and guide through the process. I met with, well, I went into Lakes Highway District for easements, and we had a, kind of a different little idea, but Eric, long story short, Eric, he said, "You have your two granted easements, use them," and so we did, and they said, "They will work fine." And that's what you see up there. I met with Cody Wright, their fire marshal. One day, I took a map and drove around and marked all the fire hydrants and visited with him, and Athol had a really fun conversation with him, and he said, "Shouldn't be a problem. You've got good, you know, good fire flows," and so that was, it was not fun visiting with him. And then, so anyhow, and then, of course, maybe we got five, five residential ERs, and to neck that down to one ER, it shouldn't be, it should be less of an overall strain than with five homes in there. Maybe the noise you're hearing is the kids out playing in the, in the, behind the community center, there's a park there, and so maybe the noise they're hearing is the kids out having fun. Well, I'll tell you, with my new neighbors, having kids laughing and cheering and wrestling and having a good time is more, better neighbors than neighbors that fight and sue over stupid little stuff than just, you know, having a, you know, we want to, we have a fun community. We have a fun congregation that's growing. You know, you know, three years ago, before Pastor Joel showed up, it was mainly thirty or forty of us old aging people, and now we have tons of young families and kids playing, and it's just a delight and a joy to see the way this church is growing and, and possibilities of what we can do for Bayview. We love Bayview. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kathy Nash may wish to speak.
Kathy Nash, 89 Jada Drive, Blanchard, Idaho. I just wanted to address the, the fact that the church is growing and we do need more space. I started attending little, about a year and a half ago, and I, the reason I attend is because my son and his family go there, and we're also, my daughter and myself are planning on moving closer so that we can be a part of this community. We want to be a part of a faithful body, and so, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Vanderfeer may wish to speak.
Thank you. I'm Melanie, can you hear me? I'm Melanie Vanderfeer, 27823 North Silver Meadows Loop in Athol, and I would like this church to be built, and we have been attending for the last year, but have been through the years we've been there at the Bayview Bible Church, and I believe that a church would be a blessing to the community, and there's a few things I would just like to say about that. It says, "A church in a small town or rural area can serve as a vital hub for community life, offering a space of connection, support, and spiritual growth. It can foster a sense of belonging, provide a place for shared experiences, and address the unique needs of its residents." And there's a list of things, not very long, a sense of belonging, a social support, shared experiences, spiritual guidance, moral framework, and service, community, personal development, local engagement, economic contributions, rural isolation for people that are isolated, they can get help, economic challenges, and spiritual needs. So, I do believe that a church in a small town is important for the community, and I would hope that you would approve it, and I thank you so much.
Ann Blatt may wish to speak.
Hi, I'm, I can, I guess, I was thinking.
Okay, thank you. Frank Thomas may wish to speak. Okay, Gary Ball may wish to speak.
Evening. I'm Gary Ball, 34627 North Terrace Drive in Bayview, and I am not a member of this church, but I wanted to speak in support of the building of this church. Churches are fantastic for small communities. They bring a sense of togetherness and fellowship and a great place for community activities to happen. So, and I just live up Cape Horn Road. This traffic would not be a factor or anything like that. As a matter of fact, I think it'd probably be better, so I just wholeheartedly endorse this.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, Keith Grzelak?
I'm Paul.
Okay.
19618 East Cape Horn Road. Actually, a resident in Spokane, but we've had a home here for twenty years, and I've seen this community change substantially. We've attended as a second church, Bayview Bible Church, and this is an interesting small community that has a lot of social needs, and they're not met, and Cootney County can't meet them. I remember a period where there was no grocery store. I remember a period where there was no restaurant, and we had two FEMA fires about ten years ago, and the small group here that was meeting at the community center played a significant role in support that Cootney County can't provide. There are a lot of elderly that don't have transportation and have limited means, and I support what Gary said, because it really is a need in this community for a structure, and the changes that we have seen in twenty years, our people had second homes here. These people are now residing here, and there's even a greater need. So, I fully support, you know, moving forward with this plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Brian Amorose?
I'm David.
Jessica Carlson.
I'm Ashley.
Doug Greel may wish to speak.
Hi, my name's Doug Greel. I live at 29015 North Panhandle Road in Athol, and I'm speaking basically, everything has been said as far as the building goes, but I have a... But I have a, my wife and my two kids have a, a daughter that's forty years old. She lives with us, and she's a special needs girl. Yeah, my other daughter lives in Phoenix. One thing that, I've been going to church for about two and a half years, and I really love going there. I love the people there, they're, the elders have been real welcoming and good for our family. And having a special needs kid is somewhat of a challenge in the sense that she's loud and she's, you know, intense a lot. And I started bringing her with me, I was about four months after I started going. And they were just real inviting to her and welcoming. It touched me deeply. And they started, there was a men's Bible group there, and I started going to that. And that was real com- real comfortable. And then the gal started talking about a women's Bible study. And they invited Brianna to go to that study. And they, excuse me, they welcomed her, and she was, I kept checking on her because it was hard for me to let somebody watch my daughter without me being there. And I could leave her there, and they were really engaging, and the women there just embraced her. They, she asked pertinent questions, she got involved in it. And I think that's one thing that the community needs, is a place for people to be able to gather and to have that available on a regular basis, not just on a Sunday. But maybe a room that incorporates those kids. And basically, that's been real special. So I just wanted to throw that factor out there for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, even if Yumark does not wish to speak, I'm going to ask. So Jeff Dement does not wish to speak, is that still true?
True.
Aaron Mickles does not wish to speak? Okay. And Katie Mickles? Okay. Sarah Thomas does not wish to speak? Okay. All right, I'm just, like I said, even if it says does not wish to speak, I'm going to call you because this is going to be your only opportunity to, to give public testimony. Maria Esther McCullough also does not wish to speak? Okay. Melinda Thomas does not wish to speak? Okay. Cheryl Dement does not wish to speak? Okay. Judy Boykin does not wish to speak? Okay. Cynthia Gardner does not wish to speak? Okay. Judy Robinson does not wish to speak? Okay. Not sure the first name, but Basset? Is that a Kelly or a Kathy? Katie? Kitty? Okay. Steve Fishbaugh does not wish to speak? Cass?
Hi, Cass.
Oh, right. What's your last name? Thrasher. I'm having trouble tonight. Melody Hayes does not wish to speak? Greg Vanderfeer does not wish to speak? Jan Ball does not wish to speak? Pam Silva? Oh, right. Deborah Hotard does not wish to speak? Okay. Gina Schroyer does not wish to speak? And Justin Schroyer does not wish to speak? Angel Amoris does not wish to speak? Georgia Otten? Carol Gris- Grisalak? Okay. Jim Wilfuski or Wilfuskel? All right. Sandra Porter does not wish to speak? Caitlin Davis does not wish to speak? All right. Ron Clark in favor and did not mark? So, Ron Clark, would you like to speak? Okay. Sandra Clark? Lucas Thomas? Lori Taylor? David McCullough? Brian Basset? Don Gardner?
Don Gardner, seventeen seven twenty-four, East North Shore Lane, Bayview, Idaho. The first time I ever came to Bayview was in the summer of nineteen seventy-two. At that time, Bayview was known as Barview. And as a GI, I told all my friends, I said, you won't believe this place, it's paradise. They've got four taverns in this little town. And the demographics there have changed. This church started in a, in a Bible study on the base, on the Navy Base there. A lady opened up her home for that. Yes, I've changed. It wasn't me doing all the changing, the Lord thoroughly awakened me to my, to my need of changing my life. This church has had, like every church, it's made up of people. People succeed and people, they fail. But as my brother so eloquently said, you're not going to exceed, succeed in anything if you don't believe those words hanging on that wall right there. Is that I've seen a transformation in that community in those fifty-three years. And the biggest thing is there never been a long-lasting church, there's never been a cemetery in Bayview. So that speaks to you that the presence of God there has been a long time coming. And I, I totally support this project. I praise God for bringing these people here together that we might make it a better place than Barview.
Thank you. John and Patty Mackey? He didn't write if he wanted to speak or not. Are they still here? Okay. Cecilia Fry? Charlene Soppit?
I'm six up from here, I'm one of the old timers, and I'm happy to be here. And I see that everything is from, from the beginning.
If, we're not going to be able to pick you up on the recording? Are you, can we, can we bring it to you, or, okay?
I'm an old timer, when Jim Hubieack first came here. And I have been so blessed, and I've met so many people, and I've seen so many people come to the Lord and accept our friendship. And we really need this church in Bayview.
Okay, thank you. Erin, Erin Peters? Okay. She comes back in, I'll, I'll give her an opportunity to speak if she wants to. Probably not? Okay. Hannah Peg? Janet Peg? Joyce Wilkusky? James Spencer does not wish to speak? Mark Lewis does not wish to speak? Jared Peters? Danny Spencer does not wish to speak? Okay. Susan Bryan or Bryan? Brune? Okay, come on up. That's why I ask.
Well, I fled Seattle about four years ago, found a new home in Bayview. And it was hard to leave friends and family, but this church has brought me a new set of friends and family. In God we trust.
Okay. Thank you, and I have a, a couple more that didn't mark, whether they're for or against. Michael Bowdre? And Jacqueline Bowdre?
My roots in Bayview, Idaho go back to the fifties. I've seen a lot of stuff in that little town. My family has been in that town since the late fifties. And my husband and I are so blessed that we were able to buy my father's property and remodel his little cabin that was one of the base houses. I've seen a lot of stuff in that little town, like Dawn said, when it was Barville. I participated, I was part of that. But then I found the Lord. And for years, I would drive by going up Perimeter Road to the post office to get my mail. And there was a cross sitting up on that property. And every time I'd go up that road, that cross is going, "Where are you at, Jackie?" And then my neighbor Judy Robinson, and she and I talked, and I asked her about the church. And she encouraged me to give it a try. My daughter and I went on an Easter Sunday in the middle of COVID, and we were so embraced and so loved by those people. And I've seen this community revolve. This church is a good part of the reason why that community has evolved. And I sure encourage you to approve all of these permits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and last but not least, we do have Suzanne Sig- Signower, Signer? Yes.
I do this in front of a bunch of people that really want to make this happen. Can we get, would it be okay to put the site plan up? Okay. My name is Suzanne Senior, and I'm representing both myself and my husband Craig McClary. We are, we live in Moscow Conestoga Drive, and we are the owners of Lot Two, Block Two, which is right in back of the furthest most point of the church. And if I understand correctly, that's going to be the highest point of the church, the steeple will be right there? Okay. So that's where I'm coming from, folks. Pardon?
Okay, yeah, if, um...
No steeple?
Yeah, if I could just have you, if you have, yeah, if I could just have you address me, and then if, you know, you have questions, you can kind of ask them to me or concerns.
I appreciate that.
And then I'll give the, hopefully the applicant will be able to come up and address or the staff.
As the owners of Block Two, Lot Two, which directly borders the proposed site, we respectfully oppose the conditional use permit, CUP twenty-five dash zero zero four, for this project due to its significant size, accommodating three hundred people, an incompatible impact on the residential neighborhood and our property. And just because it's possible to merge five lots together and meet the land use requirements of the county for those five lots merged, if the CUP is approved, it doesn't mean it's compatible with nearby residents, or it's a good idea for Bayview, just in terms of size. I understand you guys are, you know, growing, but three hundred people. I drove by the site again today, five lots together is pretty massive. And those are my feelings. And Vlad said, this is an intense use. He's used the word intense several times, and that's what I'm reacting to, is the size. What, what the county can't measure at this time are those things that will affect the quality of the neighborhood the most, the impacts from all the increased activity and large footprint of the project. This is a very exuberant crowd. Wow, Sunday mornings, wow. These are the, the large footprint of project, and these are the things that are only felt after the church is built. And then the responsibility is the neighbors to keep the noise down, to ask the church to keep the noise down, maybe to remove cars if they're parking where they shouldn't be. You said there was a light plan, but I didn't see the light plan. What I was told was, or what I read, was that there'd be lighting all along the parking lot areas, the walkways to the church and around the church, what almost looks like the whole entire five lots to me. So that probably means they're going to be lit all night long, but I could not find anything that would communicate that to me. I'm sure that the church wants to be a good neighbor, I want to be a good neighbor too. But based on the project size proposed, these things will happen. One thing I know in my many years of life is that if you build it, they will come. We chose this neighborhood for its peaceful environment and protections, restricted residential zone and CCNRs meant to preserve that character. Some things to note, I talked about the lighting plan. The other thing to note is, you know, I looked up what one car door slamming creates, and that's eighty decibels of noise. So imagine if you're the neighbor right in back, back there, right next to one of the parking structures and can hear the other parking lot too, the slamming of car doors, the, the joyous conversation, but still conversation, almost right in my backyard. So we talked about the steeple, and then the site plan that I see, the setback is twenty-five feet. I can see the fifteen-foot residential zone, you know, the vegetation going across. That should be twenty-five feet, so that church, the church end should set back at least twenty-five feet. It doesn't feel that way in that site plan, so that's why I'm bringing it up. And then the other thing is, I read that the church would not be able to rent out the facility. They could loan out the facility, but they couldn't rent that out. I don't understand where that comes from, since churches in Idaho have the ability to rent their facilities out. And that is one thing that, you know, kind of concerns me. How often do we rent it out? Can we rent it out? I can't, because of the CCNRs, I can't create a business out of my home. I can't do an Airbnb based on the CCNRs. But this project would be able to lend out a huge facility, so that's concerning.
If I could just have you make your final point, you're a bit over your time.
Oh, thanks, I just had one thing closing to say. He had another minute or second. What I'm really just asking to think this through, I mean, they could come back with a smaller footprint. I knew about the church, I would welcome the church. I am just stunned by the impact of the size and what's going to happen. And I've also noticed that so far, nobody lives in the neighborhood that's come up and spoken for this wonderful church. So none of the other neighbors, you know, you guys aren't feeling it, you're going to leave. You're going to leave that site afterwards. So my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Before I give the applicant an opportunity, if they want to make any final comments. Uh, before I give the applicant an opportunity, if they want to, um, make any final comments, Vlad or Mr. Callahan, you just want to describe real quick the lighting requirements?
I don't have, I don't have the code in front of me, but it states that, "Oh, lighting shall be downward, directed in no more than zero point two foot candles." So, um, when, should the project be approved as part of the building permit application and site plan review, they will be required to submit a site plan that complies with the requirements of, um, the code. Uh, it is not necessarily required as part of a conditional use permit, uh, but we do have, I believe, a conditional approval that, uh, has a, a standard requirement for outdoor lighting.
Thanks. That's all the questions I had for you. Mr. Carlson, do you want to make any, uh, final statements or rebuttals or anything else you'd like to say or address?
Just a quick question. And may be permitted to have our architect address a couple of the concerns that we're-
Absolutely.
Marcus, would you talk about setback and steeple? And those two things in particular?
Let's go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
I will do that. Marcus Valentine, Architects West, uh, three, two, four, nine, six, North Clogstone Road, Athel. Uh, happen to go to this church currently, uh, as well as being responsible for a lot of the graphics that you see. Couple of things. First of all, I would just like to express thanks to the individual for showing the bravery to come up in front of this crowd and express, um, you know, an, uh, an unpopular opinion to the, to the congregation. Um, I think some of the concerns that were raised are completely legitimate if you're looking at, um, a flat view of what this might look like. The first thing to, to be aware of is the site plan is laid out in accordance with all of the required setbacks. It shows the required landscape buffer yards, uh, with a description of what is proposed to be provided within those buffer yards. And from the height standpoint, uh, one thing that I do want to mention that might help assuage some of your concern is the topography of this site is pretty extreme. It slopes quite a lot from Perimeter Road to the north. Uh, what you're not really picking up here, and it's a little bit more evident in the renderings, is the backside of this, where the sanctuary space is tucked up against that north property line, it's buried approximately six feet in the ground. And so the main floor of the building recesses into the hillside. So the, the front side, the south-facing side of the building is two stories tall, but it is in essence a daylight basement. So, uh, we are meeting the overall height restriction for the property, um, within the design. And, uh, a steeple is actually permitted to exceed that under certain circumstances, but, uh, we would seek to not do that if it was going to be seen as an obstruction to the neighbors. Um, the current plan that you see does not exceed that height. So it is within compliance of the height restrictions. Another comment really quickly, the twelve thousand nine hundred square feet is between the two floors. So the footprint of the house is not that dramatically larger than many of the homes that you will see on the shoreline right there. So, uh, once again, the, the lighting will be designed in accordance with the county's requirements. We have house side shields and downward facing lighting. We have to provide a certain amount for accessibility. But also, um, it can be on a timer. It can be on a photocell, so it is not burning all night and, and is not required to if there's not an event going on. So most of these concerns that have been brought up will be addressed in the permit documents and the design of the facility. And if I may, I want to make one other comment about public safety, which we have heard a lot of testimony tonight about the function of the church and the asset that it is to the community. But one thing I want to mention is right now, this church meets in a community center that was never designed to be a church. And what we are proposing to provide is a building designed specifically to current contemporary codes and construction practices, current planning and zoning requirements that will be a safe place for this congregation to meet. And meeting all of those requirements for access, accessibility, public safety, uh, we will be creating a better, safer condition for the community through this project than what we currently have now. So that is all, and I am happy to answer any other questions, uh, if they come up.
Thank you.
Yes, I just have a couple of closing comments, sir, if that's okay. I, I think the concerns voiced have been addressed. This will be the largest parking lot in town. Lights have been addressed. Noise, thank you to my friend Steve Taylor for talking about noise and how it will not escape the building. As far as car doors go, our people do drive cars. I don't know that their doors are any more noisy than non-church-going folk. So I don't know what really to say to that. The steeple's been addressed. As far as the building usage, um, and in terms of renting it out, we are a five oh one C three, non-for-profit organization. So in terms of regular, uh, any kind of regular renting it, uh, we're not interested in that. We will want to make the best use of the building, meaning, um, I, uh, things like, that were mentioned like weddings and funerals on a, on a case-by-case basis. We want to be accommodating emergency situations, emergency town meetings, things like that, and potentially other things. It's new to us to have a building, so as a five oh one C three, we do have, um, our own, uh, covenant and constitution in terms of what we believe. And if you study current litigation against churches, churches just have to be exceptionally careful what they allow their buildings to be used for and not be used for because they, to take on certain liability. In, in short, we would be most eager to approve things that don't blatantly contradict, say, our statement of faith and our convictions as a church. So while I'm not gonna, uh, stand here and say, "Yes, we would allow this event," note to this event right now. We don't have any of those in front of us. I will say that we are eager to serve the community in every way we can that maintains our integrity and, and protects us from any, uh, from any litigation. So, um, that is all I have on that. But I, I don't know if you have any questions for me?
I have no further questions for you. Thank you, sir. Any administrative matters? Mr. Callahan, sir?
Mr. Hearing Examiner David Callahan, Community Development Director. I can clarify that zero point two foot candles is about equivalent to moonlighting on a clear night. By comparison, we're under about thirty foot candles. So zero point two is de minimis, as you might hear in a courtroom. The other thing I can mention for the clarity of use is, since this is a CUP and it's being considered under the auspices or egis of a church and place of assembly, then that gives me some authority to interpret the kinds of uses that could be allowed. And my reading of this sort of thing is it would need to be those that one would expect to be customarily incidental to a church, as you have just heard. Funerals, weddings, those kinds of things have been typically held at a church. I would not expect there to be a rock concert or something obnoxious because that's not customarily incidental. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any administrative matters? Okay. All right, that is gonna bring us to the conclusion of tonight's hearing. I believe I have enough information and testimony in the record in which to base my recommendation. Um, so in just a minute here, I'm gonna close the record. Uh, just as a quick reminder, again, I am writing a recommendation, based on everything I've reviewed in the record and all the testimony I've, I've heard here tonight. And I will be sending that recommendation to staff who will bring it in front of your county commissioners, who have the ultimate decision-making authority in this. So just a reminder of that. Um, but without, uh, anything else, I will officially close the record for CUP twenty-five dash zero 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 four, Bayview Bible Church. And we are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.